Yeah, Commissioners. It's the February seventh, all Commissioners are present. Public comment, I don't see public here, I don't see publics there. So, I'm gonna move on to Department Head and since I see Doug in front of me. Then Doug, do you have anything or you're just listening in today?
I had two things, actually. One is, I see that you're there and not here. But, did I miss something? Because the last, the last schedule I got from Davis was the end of December and it has you here at the DOC and there's a nice breakfast over here for you.
You can come pick it up.
I sent the updated schedule at the end of January.
Yeah. Yeah, let's recess for twenty minutes and.
I think that, um.
Yeah.
I think there's something with the emails again, Davis. I, I've been through all your deleted emails.
And we have a taxi service now?
I don't know. Um, yeah, that, that, that's inconsequential, but we'll eat the food. Um. The other thing would be, um, if I can do it now, I will if you want. I just wanted, we talked about the boiler, um, issue here, Chris, and at least just reporting out briefly about that.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. So, um, we have three boilers, um, and one of them went down about a week ago. And, um, it's would cost us at least fifty thousand dollars if we were to repair it. Um, Les is recommending that we don't, that we are completely safe to, to run with two, that having three was sort of an abundance of caution, maybe back when we were even considering having an expansion on this building. As an example, he pointed out Elliot Hospital runs with one, one boiler. So I just wanted to report that out and, um, if you have a question or a concern, but we're, we're planning to not replace that third boiler and make do with two.
And we have at this point, what they're doing is they're just leaving it as is, if that's somewhere down the road, they come back to us and say, we do need to do the repairs, but as I said, Laszlo doesn't give a damn that it's more than enough to have two run off.
What, what's the nature of the breakdown? I mean, what, what is it that went wrong? I mean, it's a chamber and there's a heating element and so what, what is it that went wrong?
I don't know, but I know what it'll cost.
But I, I don't care about that. I wanna know why it went wrong.
Yeah, something wore out. I, I mean, hon- honestly, I, I don't know the detail. I trust my maintenance director when he said that it's shot and it, and it needs to be replaced and, and whenever he can do things, replacing parts, he tries to, but that's not an option, but.
I don't think the question, Doug, I don't think the question is bad. It's, it's just that if something goes down, um, if you could just ask Laszlo at some point to get back to us, even in this meeting, to, to tell us what the nature of the issue is, that would be just good, just for knowledge sake, that's it. Not because we think you should replace it or not, it's just that.
Yeah, we, we need to know. We need to know what, what the hit is.
How much do you even use a boiler anyway? I mean, I think it does.
Well, using it to make up the difference between the geothermal and, and the internal temperature.
We have a difference now?
Well, I think so.
Is there a disparity? I didn't think it was.
Um, well, the only thing you're doing is you're tempering the outside air with the geothermal temperature, so I don't know if that brings it up to seven, but I think it might bring it up to fifty-six or fifty-eight. But, um, but that might be a good question to have the next time we're at the jail with them to do the tour to see how well is the geothermal offsetting our need to use propane and those boilers to make up the difference. I don't think we're pulling geothermal to get the room to seven, I don't think.
It's been, it's been doing very well where our propane, um, usage has gone way down as a general matter. We're, we're doing well in that regard with the geothermal offsetting propane use. I'll ask and I'll probably have an answer by the end of the meeting, what exactly broke with the boiler?
Great, that'd be good.
Okay.
Probably right. I don't know.
Yeah, but I water a city water, so it's treated pH adjusted. But I think it's worth a note. It's a fifty thousand dollar price there. And we just need to know the details.
Okay. Suzanne, aside from what's on the, on the agenda here, is there anything else that you wanna bring up?
Yes. But I can also couple it or that it follows. I wanted to give an update on the application we're making to the substance abuse and mental health administration, it's a federal grant. Uh, it will be a, I guess our fourth or fifth system of care grant. It's now under a new name, under the federal level. I can tell you more about it now or say that.
Why don't you do it now and then we'll just go through the other eighty-two.
Very quickly, I will be submitting it by next Wednesday. It's for four million dollars with two million match. The two million will be matched with our current state contract. Uh, it, within this one, it will have two flagship projects that will both be piloted on behalf of our region and for the state. We've been writing this with Daryl Tanny at the Bureau for Children's and Behavioral Health and with Jim South at King State College under the Behavioral Health Improvement Institute. And under this grant, the two pilot projects will be, um, one is a scaled down wraparound. And we're calling it BRECK, which stands for Brief Enhanced Care Coordination. And the other program is Intensive In-Home Supports, which is a, a hybrid or an adaptive version of something similar to what we're doing right now with home-based therapy, but it's more expanded than that. It has a little more case management where you're also looking for resources. In both of these cases, these are brand new programs to our region that would be formed, piloted under this program. If we get this grant and if we get the carryover, you will wanna know that for the budget because it will add four million for the budget towards the end of the year, because it could launch quite quickly, but it would be a conversation.
Is the four million a one-year grant?
No, it would be over four years.
Okay, I was gonna say, because the state contract doesn't have two million. Oh, it would over four years.
It would over four years. Okay, yeah, so that's.
So the four million doesn't have to be added this year. It would be.
It could be for next year. Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And it would still be one-fourth of it.
Uh, of the total four millions, that'd be one million per year. Yeah, one million per year. Yeah. Under this, it would involve also hiring. Uh, we're still working out the numbers. It's one or two, or perhaps one and a half clinicians. And right now, we're at likely two coord- care coordinators under the Brief Enhanced Care Coordination program. So it's right now about three to as many as five physicians would be created.
So the match is covered by existing online items?
By the grant. Uh, sorry, the state contract that covers the balance of the program. That's how we're gonna propose it.
My department, which is the state contract, and they allow it to be a match, which.
So far, so good. We're gonna keep, keep on with that. Working, working alright.
So that will be away from that.
Now, we'll still, we'll still draw down on it. She's just allowed to use it as a match.
So are you, were you leaning towards that we need to gross budget about a million of it?
Well, what she, at first, she, when she said four million, she said we'll have to add four million. And that there's a two million dollar match on the state contract. Well, the state contract annually is only one million, two hundred and fifty thousand, so I was concerned that she needed the two million match in one year.
No.
But it's four years and we won't have to budget four million in one year. We'll have to budget one million in each year, so.
Correct. And in year one, if awarded, we would spend probably, we would wanna add two hundred and fifty thousand to the current budget. They under this grant, they're requiring that you launch whatever your proposed services are within four months. And that would be January first, which means they'll have things ready to go with hiring these four physicians.
And I'm assuming you're gonna wanna separate department for this, similar to the other one, which is fine.
Yes.
So you're, you're suggesting that we actually, with the executive committee at this point or in August?
No, wait till we get awarded. Yeah, because it will be, yeah, it's quite possible that because we have a current grant with them, which is supposed to end this August. And we're already planning on a no-cost extension application, which will get submitted over the winter, late winter. This will be February or March. We won't know if that's gonna get awarded until about the time we'll know if we get this one too.
Yeah.
It's quite possible they would not give us a new one while we still have an open one. So it might become an either or and then the accounting wouldn't partner.
Yeah, and, and talking to Dennis on Friday, I did say to him, the interesting part of all of this is going to be that they're in the midst of, of ramping up their staffing currently, and they have been for a period of time. And it's just hard getting people through the door. Initially, it wasn't, but the market is what it is right now and maybe, maybe after this graduation year of May, they'll find a few more people that can come through the door. But, you know, to ramp up in a four-month period when they've been trying to ramp up to get to forty is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be challenging. It's not that it can't be done, but I did point that out to him that it's going to be, and what does that mean to everything in the scheme of things if you can't find the staff to meet this?
Yep.
Who, who are they hiring? Like MSWs or?
Yes, the clinician will.
The clinician is, but, but, uh, but the, the regular people, bachelor's degree level.
Yeah.
Um, and.
In some type of social services, social work, psychology, child development, something along those lines, and it's been challenging.
Yeah.
One of the intended outcomes of writing in the grant is that the hope is, is that it also improves job satisfaction. Because you give them more options, uh, and it makes their job overall easier.
Yeah. And one of the things we've found is that the physician we're hiring, we're paying fair. And we're paying at what, a little bit, you know, right where market needs to be compared to others. And they're still struggling, so it is, it is what it is. It's just the market right now, like everything else we're doing.
Well, how long have we been advertising for your role?
A month, no doubt.
Yeah, and we've had one resume and four, three months.
About that might be a lot of huge shoes to fill.
Well, they are, but not his position, but yeah.
As a entry-level attorney?
All eight, doesn't necessarily have to be entry-level.
Well, I can take a warm body.
If they can solve a mirror.
Eli, what are you doing later?
Maybe I should change profession.
Hey, I gotta listen. You're it?
Yeah, no, you gotta go.
And you need a law degree for this? Definitely?
Yeah. Come out of retirement.
I'm gonna get to that in a minute.
I could come out of retirement. It's only been three years.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Kim, do you have anything?
I just have a quick EMS update. Um, as y'all know, we oriented seven people last week to EMS. They are now off of orientation and doing their FTO ride time, um, so they're on shift, not counting as a body yet, but, um, by, um, the, by the end of the week of the nineteenth, they will all be off of FTO and counted as a body, as long as everything goes well with their training. Um, we have another orientation currently scheduled for the twenty-sixth with another seven people.
What?
Um, I mean, we're getting to the point where I don't know that we can hire anyone. Yeah, no, that's where we are aware that, that if those seven people successfully make it through orientation, we'll be at forty-five total. Um, so we'll be.
Have we had some washouts?
I don't know that we have forty-five FTEs. I'm sure we're gonna have washouts though, but.
Some of them are pre-deum.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so in the next orientation that we have scheduled, we have, um, four medics and three EMTs. Um, and then we're, I'm actually, um, gonna pull the ads down, um, for right now and let things kind of settle out because quite honestly, we don't have enough FTOs to, um, to orient folks the way we want to, so that's why we're pushing this orientation off for a bit.
Well, consider this. Consider changing the ad to say, thanks to the tremendous response to the best place to work in New England. We're now developing a waiting list for new employees.
I love it.
And that, that we're currently fully staffed.
Yeah.
You will be absolutely unique in almost any entity that you can name. I don't care what the category is. And that would be a great, great way to.
And then you can, and then you can put it here, there, here, here, here.
Yeah. I mean, that we're fully staffed and still accepting applications to be on a wait.
On a waitlist. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, what did they got, what did they got that, that they're doing that everybody, I wouldn't be part of that.
Exactly. You can't, you can't get away from articles about the national shortage.
But that's, that's an article in itself, right?
Yeah. We, we have had a tremendous. We have had a tremendous response. I actually yesterday got a phone call from two more medics that are I'm gonna be moving up here from down south and they work in a county-based system down south and they're about us. Um, and so reached out to us and I told them, at this point, I would be happy to take a look at your resume and share it, but.
Well, they, they'd certainly have some, uh, time to go getting an actual license.
They're turning them over in about two weeks.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so they're telling people it's four to six weeks.
Yeah.
But, um, it's been, it's about a week and a half to two weeks that they're turning licensing around, so we are, um, and we're in.
I know, right? It just is so crazy.
Yeah, even in research, because we're in research season right now and they're still turning them over like boom, 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 so.
That's a good thing.
I'm gonna.
Great.
And you're fully staffed anyway, what are you talking about?
Yeah, quit whining, Eli.
You should be more humble to let all the ads, you know.
You should be more humble, like the county attorney.
Yeah, why I love my duck, because nobody, they're love fish. I offered and you pulled back on me. So, that's all I have.
Eli, is Eli fully staffed?
Eli, um, I believe.
Well, yeah, we are, we are there.
Yeah.
We're good.
He needs to get somebody into Britten's office.
Let's, 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 let's start that. Is that why you guys are here?
Yeah, that's why we were asked to be here.
Yeah, is that, do you want to?
Yeah, what, what's that?
Are you, are you?
Thought we were gonna go in a non-public for this.
Yes, we can. What, what are we talking about? A personnel situation that we wanna talk about, so.
We're switching offices.
Yeah. And it's a personal decision, so we fall underneath, um.
Okay, was there anything else?
I'm all set.
There's great news, great news.
So can I have a motion to go in the non-public?
So move second.
Okay, Commissioner Wasman, hi. Commissioner Clark?
You free for anything?
We gotta text, um.
Do you want me to go?
He does have an answer.
I can imagine.
So, as a result of deliberations in non-public session, we. Yeah. We, we voted to authorize the county attorney and the sheriff to cooperate with create a regional prosecutor position and to make an offer to an applicant.
Correct.
Yeah, I'll make sure.
Is that a motion that needs to be?
Executed.
And then I, I, I. Okay, and Doug's back. Okay. Hi, Doug.
Hello. Do you wanna hear a boiler now or another time?
Waiting with bated breath.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, um, there are, um, there's a stainless steel sleeve in each of these holding tanks for each of the three units. Um, the stainless steel sleeve in this tank had a pinhole in it and it's, once you have a pinhole begins to, to be a risk of corrosion. A few years ago, Les actually was able to patch this and get some, some additional time. But now there are additional pinholes and additional corrosion to the point that the stainless steel sleeve would have to be completely replaced. Um, and that's the underlying issue. And by, by the way, taking it out of operation, it would save a third of the cost because the total capacity is about three thousand gallons. Um, and it's an on-demand system and we're kinda keeping that heated and it's really never being, never been used actually. Um, that, that volume of water, so.
So, so my question is, given that all three boilers are the same age, do we do inspections of the other two to see if their tubes are, are in, in serviceable condition? Because you know, ultimately, it, it would make some sense that we'd have to do something with some of those tubes at some point. And I'm just wondering if that's worth planning for, or if any of the existing tubes can be salvaged if we need spares or something. Now, of course, they're still fifteen years old. Uh, but that's what I'm looking at, because I know we, we did tube stuff at Maplewood decades ago. We did stuff, because we, we did, we had to rebuild some of the internal components of the boilers decades ago, Maplewood. So that's, that's why, you know, I don't wanna just go blindly into the future. If we've got three identical boilers and one is um, useless, we, I, I wonder if it's worth inspecting the others to know what we're headed for. You know what I mean?
Yeah, my understanding is he's inspected them and that's a part of why he's able to confidently make this recommendation. Um, and that's a, yeah, I understand they're all the same age, so there's that question if one's starting to fail, what about the others and can we predict, you know, how long we can get out of the others? But he does and has inspected them. That was part of what he did. Now, what he exactly saw and why he comes back saying, we're good, um, I trust that what he saw in the others was of not, not enough concern that we're about to have another one fail.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the information.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Now, do we need to go get, um?
Suzanne.
Suzanne.
I can go do that.
Yeah. Um, thank you.
So, Master, they already need uniforms. Special Response Team.
She'll have to speak to it, yeah. So, yeah, we move on to schedule items. Master agenda item one, one, five, five, twenty twenty, Corningham, to DOA Homeland Security Grant, Suzanne Bensley will be here in a moment to speak to it. Ask and expected to vote to authorize grant manager Suzanne Bensley to submit an application upon award to execute documents and accept the grant for four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-four cents to purchase uniforms for the Menadoc Special Response Team. And we'll have her explain the Menadoc Special Response Team when she comes in.
She's on her way. She's just hanging up on a call.
So move.
For discussion.
At least me, this is a team that's been starting to come together with funding for a couple of years.
Here she is.
Yeah.
Hey.
Hi.
How are you guys?
Good. So I outlined what the expectation is. Um, Jack did try to put a motion on the floor. They died for lack of second because they wanted to know a little bit more information. What is?
Compliment, I appreciate.
And, and.
I would've been so disappointed.
What is the Menadoc Special Response Team and all that jazz?
Okay, Menadoc Special Response Team. You might be more familiar with the term SWAT. Uh, so this is a team that is halfway between the, uh, boots-on-the-ground patrol officer and a SWAT team. And, and in our little rural corner of the state, we have several towns that are just too small and maybe they only have one patrol officer or two or none even and cannot form a team like this for obvious reasons. So they form the Special Response Team that when any one of their member towns have a need for something like this, they all come together and respond to each other's member towns. Uh, incidentally, Cheshire County Sheriff's Office is one of the members. Uh, so any of the towns that Cheshire County responds to are included into this membership. As well as, uh, I would have to look up all of the towns, but a couple off the top of my head are Dublin, I believe Joffrey. Um, I'd have to go look up the list if it's of interest. I feel like Alstet's on that one. Uh, so there's a few of them. And about ten towns. And, uh, so the Special Response Team through, uh, the, there's a, a number of them around the state. And they're given an annual allocation by the New Hampshire Department of Safety, Homeland Security. This year's allocation to our local team is forty-seven hundred dollars and some change. Uh, there's usually multiple strings attached and shortlists of what they're able to do with the equipment, and this year's no different. Uh, through process of elimination with what they're allowed to do and what they need, they've come up with uniforms. They're about a ten-member team, so this grant this year will purchase uh, of these ten uniforms for them, so that when they respond, they have greater safety. These uniforms in particular are, have a lot of fire safety features to them. A lot of, uh, I, other hazard-type features for covering their whole body with greater protection than the average shirt would. Uh, we also worked with them. This is our third grant with them. Uh, we have recently gotten, um, headsets. We first applied to the Department of Safety, you might recall about a year and a half ago, when they were in need of communication headsets. Uh, we went through the entire application process, which they approved, and then when we went to go make the, uh, approval of our procurement, they denied because it was just very oddly, they decided that, uh, oh, we guess we didn't notice it when you applied, but that's not allowed. So we made a pivot at that time and purchased a, a fancy, a sometimes specialized camera. It's a throw camera that you throw into a confined space. Uh, and they got that under that grant, and then I went and found a private grant for them, so they also have their communication headsets. So this is now our third equipment purchase for them, second one under a state federal pastor grant, and, uh, we already had that private grant for them. Incidentally, that was through Tinkey.
Is it sort of like a, um, like, like a fire, a volunteer fire department would do is that they would have a bag in their car that has their uniform and ready to go, because you wouldn't want to if you're, I'm guessing this is crisis-oriented and so you don't wanna have to go home to get uniformed, put it on, to take it, and then go.
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't, unfortunately, in our area, maybe two to three times a year, this happens. Uh, you might recall a situation in Walpole was one of the more recent, it was quite a few years ago, thank goodness, that they've had a break over COVID and have not even had. Last I was checking in with them was about four months ago, uh, so I'm not aware of the last few months, but you might have recalled an incident in Walpole where some gentleman was having some domestic challenges and barricaded himself into a do a shed in the backyard with a firearm. And the Special Response Team came out and were able to successfully, successfully negotiate and calm the situation and nobody was hurt. That's the last one that I was aware of, but something like that, like it, it could be not necessarily an active shooter, that would require a different kind of response, but it would be like a barricaded person uh, is one of the main types of things that they do, swift water rescues, all types of rescues, uh, for example, if somebody, uh, at the mountain that maybe that's a little less for them.
They'd be doing swift water, I mean.
They have, they have swift water in their training. They're supposed to, at least that was the prior grant, one of the reasons they couldn't make use of it.
Well, why am I, there's a, there's a separate water rescue.
There is a separate water rescue, of course, yes.
Okay, they, they have had two deployments since two thousand and seventeen, both of them domestics, one in Peterborough, one in Walpole.
Oh, Terry knows more about it?
This, this, this whole thing is, it, it just goes back to, uh, you know, the Homeland Security effort to, uh, weaponize local police and frankly, I'm not gonna support any of that. I feel very safe, uh, with our, with our officers presently. I don't think buying them, uh, special uniforms, it would make them, you know, distinguish them, uh, from other police officers. You remember the SS, they did that once. And now, just in principle, I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna support, uh, any of that effort. Now, just in principle, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to support uh any of that effort. I don't think it's needed, I think it's a, overkill reaction, uh, still it's. It's reverberating from nine eleven. You know, you avoid the other issues about those cameras, replaces it when they go, whatever, uh, all that kind of stuff. I just don't think it's needed, if the uh federal government wants to create their own. State police unit or whatever like that, you know, if I'm fine, you know, but. I don't think it's a good idea to uh start doing that on a local level.
I could have, uh, the.
And instead of, and instead of just, you know, going after my character, the next time.
With that same, with these uniforms.
Should we bring them in? Would you like to hear from the Special Response Person?
I, I, I don't have any problem with people, I mean, I think, I feel very safe with.
They could probably do a much better job than I could describing what they do and.
No, 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 I, I, I know quite well.
Okay, that's totally understandable, it's optional for us.
I don't be interested in hearing more because I'm, I'm definitely on the fence right now. So you're here, Terry's here, I'm right here in the middle, Jack, where are you?
Uh, yes. Uh, well, I think. I, I was inclined to support it because this has been a multi-year effort, they're actually kind of up and running to the extent that they've prepared and. I, I guess I'm not inclined to change. My support, I don't disagree with Terry that. The frequency of use is. Very low. My bet is we'll probably spend more money replacing equipment that virtually never gets used than, than using it in the manner intended. But I'm not sure that. Not sure that's a reason not to have. For the same reason that we have a ladder truck, I can't remember the last time we actually used it. But, I don't know.
Incidentally, Eli is on this team, I, I feel like maybe we should.
Can I just ask a, a question about? This is a group of individuals that would come into a scene. In a town that has, well, it, it was, let's not say Westphalia, but if they had a police chief in that town. The police chief is overseeing that scene and they are working with him. On what his needs are in that moment, am I correct in saying that?
Well, I'm, I'm.
They don't take bull versus.
Well, I'm quite sure that most small towns do not have the beliefs, experience, the training or capacity to handle unique circumstances. I, I think that's probably pretty clear.
Yeah.
Well, this was the, this was the argument that they made when a form, a king formed their SWAT team. I was there in the room that did it.
Yep.
And uh. Their, their, their full intent was to service the entire town. And as a matter of fact, in these two instances, they were there with the bear again.
I have an observation and a question. My observation is the townest daughter with, with which I'm very familiar, having been a resident there for. Twenty-two years. Uh, currently does not have a police chief because the uh, because the chief retired at. The former police officer who really didn't do much or anything, retired at the end of last year. Uh, the townest daughter is now considering trying to hire someone. Uh, as an officer for, for the town. Or perhaps working with the adjacent town of Nelson to be sharing a police officer between the two. And um, and um, and under those circumstances. They would not be twenty-four hour coverage. And my question, and my unrelated question, question is, what does SWAT stand for?
Special Weapons and Tactics?
Tactics, yes.
Did you ever watch the show? Back in the seventies, it was a. I don't think I.
Well, can, can.
I was, I was working hard and now it's.
He had other acronyms he was dealing with.
Well, it's an interesting question, what the difference is of the distinguished points are between the SWAT team. If teams is still available for all people and, and this. This group of people, and I don't know the answer to that. Is there kind of like a point person of this, other than Eli?
Yes, hi, his name is Tim uh Sopu, I haven't said the last name correctly. From Dublin, Police Chief Dublin, he's the team commander. He's the person that I've been working with to write the materials and make the requests.
Maybe some, maybe. Is there a time, is there a deadline, but I wish this actually would have to take place.
Deadline passed about a week ago and they uh gave us till Friday for it, but you guys, I'm pretty sure they'll give us more time. Uh, because it's funding allocated just to them.
Well, i- is it possible to submit the application and withdraw it? In order to both preserve the time and also some additional information?
Yes, and.
Pardon?
Could this individual come to next week's meeting?
Well, I can certainly make the request, I don't think that he would have any trouble with it. No, he would be very happy to see you. Very pleasant person, I think you like.
I'm sorry.
Since we're EMS, maybe zooming in.
Can we zoom down there?
Yeah. Yes.
Or do you want to have him come two weeks out? Uh, I can make the invitation, see when he's available.
I just don't want to jeopardize. The grant.
Yeah.
No, so he could have it in person.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, two weeks from now would be for in-person? I, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought I just heard next week is Zoom only.
No.
Okay.
No.
As a matter of fact, Dublin probably ought to come to the EMS building.
Yeah. Yeah, so invite him next week.
Okay. Uh, in person to the EMS building.
EMS building, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I will do that. Yeah.
Dublin should see it.
And we, I, I think it's okay if you would like, since it's only one week, I don't know that it would be too much trouble, I can reach out to the state and, and see if they'll give us a. You know, that we brought it up in the meeting and then you have more questions and you're not ready to sign off on it, yeah.
Right, I mean, I, I think, I, 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 I think we ought to give Terry's point some. Some, some visibility, put it in the record and see. It could be that. Going forward, we'd be more restrained in, in funding, but, but I don't know, I don't know, because I.
Yeah, of course, because the um.
It's been a year and a half since we kind of had this discussion about what they're going to do anyway and why.
Right, and we are sort of sponsoring their, their grants now, all of their grants. It's only three, but there would be another one next year and the year, so this isn't, like I said, it's annual.
Yeah.
And they're looking to us to sponsor this annually. But if we are not able and we tell them that. The commissioners feel that it is not right, that is okay, they can just find, they've got other member agencies. They had trouble and that's how we got pulled in, um, Eli reached out to me saying that they didn't have someone at that time, but. It's been a while and maybe that has changed.
Okay.
And another very quick unrelated question, do you have a date yet for the springtime of? Uh, grant funding course available to nonprofit organizations?
I am looking at Thursdays, May and June, six of them. There are nine Thursdays between May and June, so I haven't picked an exact start. Uh, or the exact six Thursdays within there and I have completely revised my materials. My slide decks are uh quite snazzy now with beautiful templates, but on top of that, I've reorganized to continually refine. That I wanted to be more and more straightforward, long story short, I've got more to do with that. And then I will be announcing the date because it's possible and I might make it eight sessions.
I ran across one of your successful students.
Did you? Which one?
Can't remember, I think, I think it was in the, in Chesterfield. And may have been, so I went to four meetings, I went to much of them. And uh, I will just want to say that that program is really working.
People really like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Morning, it gives, it really gives, you know, uh, that outreach, you know, to, to the communities, you know, it's sort of like.
Yeah, this one's next version is going to be eat better, I've worked out some great exercises. Things for people to do while they're here. Uh, I learned a lot between the, the, the last two and what to do between the, the next one, so this next one is going to be. Very, 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 very different, but I hope that I'm on to a format that I can more quickly reproduce. And not have so many months in between, with a new position joining the department in the second half of this year. My hope is, is that I would be offering these seasonally, one, uh. You know, for two months and then not one month and then two months and then not kind of around the calendar. Um, maybe skipping winter for obvious reasons, it's also federal grant writing time, so three, three to four a year, I would see this happening. Right after this second, I feel like this, this one will have the biggest jump in the changes and from this point forward, more like tiny changes than big ones.
Great.
Okay, with this since to wait to uh Thursday uh courses, is it morning or afternoon?
Oh, definitely morning, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely morning, I don't think I could do an afternoon or anything, yeah, no. Now, unless y'all want to go on a run with me, that's how I get my evening energy, otherwise I've, um. I need it in the AM for this, um, I, I, I haven't gotten feedback that evenings were something that people wanted, so I'm not really opening up to that right now. But if it comes through in the feedback, I would consider it. Um, but in so far, nobody has mentioned that that was a thing.
Yeah.
Um, I have run it by people, would they prefer more like twelve sessions than six? Shorter ones, more like two hours than four hours, and the feedback seems really consistent, no, keep it a half day.
Yeah, most of the people are doing it within the work schedule that they have, because they're coming from their work.
Right, exactly.
It's part of their day because they're. Job site, they don't want to go outside of that norm.
That might be it, yeah, yeah, this is not, I'm not making career grant writers, that's not the intention of this course. And if somebody already has that skill set, they'll be bored.
And, and the flip side of that is, if morning, for those people too, is, is in their best interest, that's when their, their focus, as the day wears on.
Yeah, if anything, I've gotten a request to move it even earlier in the morning, but again, that's, I, I just take me a good hour, two, two coffees.
I always, I always. I always struggle as a city counselor. That I'd work all day and then I'd go at seven o'clock to a meeting. By eight o'clock, I'm starting to feel a little bit tired, by eight thirty even more, by night, and sometimes we'd be there until ten thirty, eleven. I don't know how well the decision-making is at that point, when you got up at.
There was more of a tendency, uh, let's get this over with.
Right.
Okay, I am not arguing.
We're done, we're done, yeah, yeah.
How many times that happened?
Yeah.
Decisions.
I actually like the morning, the morning meeting, because I think I'm a little bit more fresh, ready to go and get a little bit more into it.
Yeah, that, that seems to be pretty consistent.
Thank you for doing this.
Oh, yeah, would you like to be in my, I, you know, it, it recently occurred to me, what do you guys think about opening it up for internal departments? Would you, Bob, like to?
Probably not.
Okay, then we'll put Chris Coats in the class in your place.
Yeah.
The chronicle, the chronological status is advancing too much.
It's, it, it's advancing too much, yeah, it's advancing, yeah. If you have anybody that you're thinking of at any time, just tell them to send an email to me and I'm, I'm building a really long. Email blast and when I'm ready to make the announcement, it's just going to be by email.
You probably receive one within a week or so.
Wonderful, yeah, sounds good, yeah, I'll keep you guys posted and if you want to, even if you want to like just audit a day, you don't have to commit to all six. I'll pick the topic, everyone's right about, that's a post-dog, yeah, alright, see you later, thank you.
Yeah. And we're gonna wait for a second as well, we have two, two commissioners.
Commissioners out of the room, don't be getting, doing anything fishy.
This is a impeachment hearing.
They failed, they failed on my office.
Yes, I know, yeah.
It was, I just read this really scathing.
What's Representative Green, she comes out and says, and then Democrats, they, they played a game with us, they hid Al Green. Who came, Representative Green, who came, who had surgery this past weekend, he was hidden until the last moment, then he came back and made it a tie. And it's like, really? No.
It's all about.
Left side, left side, know your vote before you go and, and have a vote. Because you had three, four people, three people who voted against it and you down some people.
Well, they had, they had a guy who just did cancer stuff, I mean, why couldn't you?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, majority, either. Majority leader, right?
Yeah. Do we have any evidence or any way to track whether anybody's looked at our recorded video?
Yeah, there's been a few views um on YouTube of our, I think there's three up so far. Uh, not a ton, we can't see who as well.
Look at this folks.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep on moving on here, um, Master Agenda item number one one five six. Cost report contract, and Cheryl's going to be talking with this. Uh, asking expected access to cost report contract options, Cheryl.
So, um, actually, the reason why I stepped away is I was calling and I was talking to um Mark Lovey at. Baker Newman and Noise because. Um, the professional fees that are in the contract that they presented to me said on the basis of proposed scope of work. Um, we estimate our professional fees for year ending twenty twenty-three. To be forty-five hundred for the Medicare cost report and forty-five hundred for the Medicaid cost report. Then option two was, um, this option represents a three-year engagement plan, which maintains fees for filing the fiscal years twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two. And so they basically just combining it, um, twenty twenty-three would be eight thousand for the two of them, twenty twenty-four would be. Um, eight thousand five hundred for the two and twenty twenty-five would be nine thousand. So, I went back and. We weren't, we, we've been paying a lot less than that.
We did this, it's stuff that Robin, somebody did.
Oh, Robin, yes, Rob, my goodness, Robin, my goodness, the name's escaping me, but she is, um, she's passed away, yeah, she did it for a long time. Oh, yeah, she, it's been a long time since we've been with Baker Newman Noise.
Oh, so we, the. BNF been doing it for a few years.
Yeah, they've been doing it since two thousand fifteen.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
She died.
Yes, so anyway, um. I, we've been, our, last year we paid a total of six thousand dollars, so basically three thousand dollars a piece. So I reached out and I said, I'm not understanding. Your option two, which maintains the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, that's not what we've been paying. And so he, he called and he said, he, he, he's apologizing that this went out this way. Um, that statement obviously shouldn't have ever been there, they, they actually do the cost reports for basically all the counties. There's not a lot of companies out there that do it.
I know.
And um. They've been significantly underpricing us for a while, it's probably, and so, um. He, they, um, they, we, they, they have to kind of get us up, but they. With, um, he says, you know, we don't mind, so anyway, he's offered an alternative. Um, that basically over the three years, rather than it being. Two, twenty-five thousand five hundred over the three years, it would come to twenty-four thousand and he says, I can split it two different ways, either. Eight thousand a year or year one seventy-five, year two eight thousand and year three eighty-five hundred and. My thought is, why don't we take the seven, it's going to come out to be the same.
I was just gonna say, it sounds like it's all the same.
It is all the same after three years, it's just year one would be a bit less, year two bit more and year three. But, I mean, I think the fees are still very minimal for what they do and.
The, the fact is, the market is not that big, all these folks have been underpricing for years, we've had this discussion even a year or two ago.
Yeah, with Bashan and Kuke.
Yeah. The fact is, you, there's not that many options.
Right.
So, I don't, I'd say.
We know each other, I mean, this isn't something where they're auditing us like Bashan and Kuke where. Obviously, you, you certainly want them doing forensic thing, this is them, you know, having the skill there.
Yeah, no.
The cost report and knowing who you're working with and. Um, it's, I, I prefer not to have to go find somebody else.
No, I, I don't disagree, so I, I mean, I, my motion would be to authorize you were the county administrator to sign. The Baker Newman and Noise contract and make the decision that you want.
If you understand that motion.
So, I mean, I mean, it's all sorts of.
Um, but, well, we went out a bit years ago, but the fact is, it's not enough.
Yeah, I know, we always.
Yeah, yeah.
Really should mention it, because it's part of the law.
Um, yeah, I was, um.
For goods.
Yeah.
From the, uh.
But, that's a good conversation. But that's a good conversation. In the meeting.
No, no, I agree.
A totally different subject. So, okay, I, um.
Yeah, thank you.
I think what I'm gonna do is I'm not, I'm gonna accept option two only because, not that it's huge money, it's not gonna break the bank. I, I didn't budget for that much of an increase, and I don't even, I don't have to go back to the executive committee for more, but.
In your discretion.
Yep. Alright, thank you.
Well, fair to say, I pose no doubt, have it?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Um, I wanna start off by, um, in my report to talk about, um, last week on, I think, Friday. Um, Sleckman, um, from Alstead, Joel, Joel McCarty.
I know.
Reached out to us and said, can we have some information for Saturday? For their, for their town meeting that they were having. And.
About what?
Um, around just a lot, uh, the increases in taxes to be raised from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three.
You used to give that presentation.
Well, no, no, twenty-two, two thousand.
Thousand.
Two thousand.
My, my fault. I thought I said.
That, that's what, that is what you originally thought.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought it said.
Yeah.
From two thousand to twenty twenty-three. So we, uh, we share my work together, and I think we gave. I think we gave them a little bit more than what they, they asked for, and he was very appreciative, but just, uh, it was, it was a good process for us, for at least me to go through, um, and really take a look at where we've come over the last few years.
Last twenty years, I mean, we really have performed very well.
Uh, we have.
But do, but do we maintain records that long?
Oh, yeah.
I, that, that, that's the value of me.
Yeah.
It was, it was already there. I didn't even have to, I did that, oh.
And then I said, she, she did the ba, the basics, and I said, can we do this? Can we do, can we add some notes to really? Because I wanted to make sure they understood what we've done, so, um.
Did you go to their meeting?
No, I was at a funeral.
Okay. Oh, did somebody die?
No, we just like one of those.
So basically, you see two significant bumps, um, over the past twenty years. One is what you took on the jail bond, one, we took on the nursing home bond.
Yeah, jail's two thousand, seven.
Is that a negative three?
Um, yeah, I think that, that particular year, Jack, is when we, um, got rid of fire mutually.
Oh, yeah.
So we actually, and we had to show that we were decreasing because we are no longer. Um.
You know, this would be an interesting, not to, not that I'm in love with advertising, but this actually might be an interesting thing to find on the county website, actually buying an ad.
Well, this is.
Well, this is only Alstead.
This is only Alstead, but it's still, some of the information goes across, some of the, some of the information goes across the board. The percentage increase is everybody, that's everybody. The above things where, how it affected them is due to their evaluations, due to their growth and their, which we have no control over. And we, in the notes down below, we really wanted to emphasize. Even up there, because what was amazing, what was amazing to us, you know, and I think if you just take the time to read the note.
Do you want to read it out loud?
Yeah, I will.
So it says, the highlighted percent are the annual increases in taxes to be raised. In two thousand seven, the county increase was due to the bond for the construction of the new jail. And in two thousand seventeen, the increase was due to the renovation and expansion of Maplewood Nursing Home. From twenty-two thousand to twenty twenty-three, including these increasing increases due to bonding for these major construction projects. The overall average increase over the last twenty-three years is an average of five point one four seven five percent. Over the last six years, the average increase has been point five seven oh six percent. The formula for Alstead's portion of county taxes is based on the town's percentage of equalized valuations as against the total equalized valuations for all county, Cheshire County municipalities. This process described is used by the Department of Revenue Administration in order to calculate the county tax allocation. Simply stated, the county can have a zero percent tax increase, as was the case in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. However, that figure is sent on to the IRA where, um, they apportion it based on the calculations against the town valuations. Therefore, the amount of taxes for Alstead could increase, even though the county did not include taxes to be raised, if Alstead's property valuation increases at a higher rate than other municipality valuations in Cheshire.
So we pull out the, the, the two bond bullets.
Three point three one.
Do you have those first ten years?
What we did, what I did is I said to Cheryl, what's the, if we take out the two, with the two, like you said,
Right.
And give an average of what it is across the board, so it came up to about three point two five or something like that. And we added that in, it came out to like a three point three one percent increase over the twenty, I mean, that's nothing sneeze at either, that's remarkable.
And regardless.
Those first ten, first ten years, I was gonna say the same. Were, were high according, I mean, as compared to the, the last ten years.
Very much.
Right, you, you're absolutely right.
That was Jack Pratt. He was a Spencer there.
Well, and, and here's the thing.
Well, also, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm, in a fifteen percent increase of nine million dollars is obviously not as much money as a fifteen million, fifteen percent increase on twenty-nine million dollars. So dollars and percentages.
I'm all in semantics.
Yeah.
Where benefits, my opinion.
Yeah.
But a lot of that, you have to also remember, a lot of people say, look at how much it's gone up and then it. We need to stay competitive when it comes to salaries. And eighty to eighty-five percent of everything we do is around salaries and healthcare benefits.
Yeah.
And so we have, I mean, especially over the last, since COVID, the, the, the wage scale has just been so dramatic in where it's gone. And so, you know, you all should feel really good at the, the work we've been able to balance out.
Zero, zero, one, zero, one.
Well, I, I, and we've had a, a good ability to use other people's money, bring in more money from other sources and not simply rely on product effects.
Well, and, and here's the other thing, if you look at it, facility wise, I mean, twenty twenty-seven, jail bond goes away. You have other smaller bonds, but the biggest bond that you still have left is the nursing home, which is done in twenty thirty-seven. And. And buildings, for the most part, your buildings are where they're going to be for an extended period of time. And really, there's no real bond on the horizon.
I don't see any reason in the next, literally in the next fifty years, that we'll have to do anything at Maplewood. Because most of the people in there will be dead because the whole generation of baby workers in the next fifty years aren't gonna be here anymore. So the whole demographic, yeah, I think we'll be wondering what to do with all stores.
Yeah. Well, by far without.
But yeah, but, and, and I, I don't see any change in the correction population.
Yeah, I don't either.
It, it's the same now as it was fifteen years ago.
I mean, if we didn't have federal limits right now, we have an average, we have fifty and sixty local, uh, in our corrections facility. Facility at the time, they were saying you could house over two hundred and thirty.
This, this, this kind of underscores fiction, but sometimes out of town experts can tell you what you want to do. Well, we hired people, George Washington University to protect jail, you know, uh, and they, oh, they just had the numbers increasing. Couldn't possibly live with the capacity that we had backed in, we're up on, and yet we're less than that now.
Yeah.
And you absolutely.
I think as we get better, we can go to programs.
Sure, there's, there's gonna go down, as we can tell from the.
I mean, if it go down, this population is gonna freeze, but.
But there's so many more people that are, I, that are attracting community, electronic monitoring and such.
Yeah.
So it's, it's really interesting, because, um. The whole. Democratic shift is gonna change everything for you.
Yeah, so my, my, my thinking was, you know, do we get aggressive? And for the executive committee, put together like Swansies and, uh, Winchesters and, you know, and just so that they have, they can see, does it really matter? Because I, I think for, for Joel, it was a eye-opener, you know?
Well, you know, you don't wanna drown people. They don't need twenty-five years with the, twenty-five years. But if you, if you did it from like two thousand eighteen, um, because you know, once you're up the hill, then you, you're at the plateau.
Yeah.
The bonds are with you.
Well, yeah.
So you're aware, I every year send out a letter to all the towns
Mm-hmm.
That, um, basically explain this whole process, and I give three years worth of information.
Yeah.
So, um, and I mean, the letters are a little clunky to work with because it's a Word document and I'm going in and I'm having to shift. So I hate to now create the letter to be five years.
No, no, sorry.
But, and I'm not saying I can't create maybe another spreadsheet to attach it to. I know one town actually, um, you know, if I'm not right on the ball, they're asking for it because they actually put it in their annual report each year.
I think that's great, three years, three years rolling every year, that's fine.
No, I'm only saying it for the executive committee that may not understand where they've gone over the last six years even, you know?
Right, and therefore it helps them. I, I could create something that is for all towns.
There are a few members of the delegation that probably have no idea about this, this information, really. They think we're just Spencer's and, and we just keep jacking up the taxes. I mean, I hear that from one of the wall polls, like, I say, you, you know, you have to look at the numbers because how far below zero can you get?
Well, my, here's, here's the thing. I mean, you know, we hear that, you know, that we're, our budget's out of control. How's it out of control? Tell me what is, where it's out of control. If I'm sending you, uh, you know, when it leaves here, it's zero percent or one percent, you know? I mean, I know where, when I first bought my house in Keene, where my taxes were, where they are today. And yet, I'm concerned, yeah, and I'm concerned, but here.
I think they, they, most people look at the entire budget, not the amount raised by taxes.
Right, yeah. Because, because they granted the, the entire budget.
Well, that's what this, the Keene Sentinel last year missed that a hundred percent. And they don't, even when they, they, they say it's gone up to this level, they don't understand that he had to put everything in that budget. And there are grants in that budget that, it's like they don't, they don't do a good enough job really explaining. This is the truth right here. This is the truth.
And it's, it's mostly just the education and awareness that most of our money comes from elsewhere.
Yeah.
And I, I, you know, we've, obviously, we've literally been talking about this for decades, trying to educate people.
Yeah.
And but every two years, every three years, you have new elected select board members and delegation members. And, and the educational process never goes away.
Right, I mean, I remember, and I've said this before, and Terry, you were with us, I believe, you guys treasured, we went to Fitzwilliam. And Fitzwilliam people said, we don't understand why we have to pay for the jail. We don't have anybody at the jail. So first of all, but then besides that, you've never had anybody, ever?
They've never heard of public education either.
Yeah.
It's, it's a collective thing, uh, because virtually everybody could say.
Yeah.
Well, and the interesting thing is, you know, Keene limits that they have to pay dispatch. But every other town complains of having to pay for the jail, but Keene is the primary occupant today. Sense of point of view.
Yeah.
At the jail. I'll bet forty percent.
Well, we gotta start charging tuition.
So, you know, but you know, when you deal with the collective benefit to citizens, you, you can't parse it out that way. Even though frequently people try, they, they jury, like the arguments work for them. So they want everybody to pay for the jail, for example, but they don't wanna pay for dispatch, even though regional public safety is in everybody's interest. Except Darius.
Well, that's the basic, uh, uh, philosophical difference between the two parties.
Yeah.
One is for the common good, one is for the individual.
Right. Yeah, that's good stuff. Yes, well done.
Yeah. Yeah, and like I said, they use, I appreciate it, I don't know how they use it in the meeting. I did read their, um, central report on their meeting. Um, I didn't see anything in there, but it is what it is.
They probably had somebody questioning them, you know, because they may have had a line.
Joel, Noel and Joel, he likes to have all that information in case he does.
He's done a good job. He's done a good job and.
Yeah.
So they know they have to fix the dam.
Mm-hmm.
It weren't pond.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh.
Oh, really?
Yeah, start to break down. Well, it hasn't been fixed since Christ even changed.
We're gonna get a grant for it. Yeah. Oh, good handle. You want?
He's on over it.
There you go. I'm from Alstead. No, no, it's not my district, but it's, that's from my highlights.
Oh, you're from Alstead?
Yeah. General store. I was like, I lived.
My uncle owned it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You know where the gun shop, uh, was, and then there's a road that goes up like this. Yeah, um, the hill, the road that goes up, it goes, it goes left and it goes right. I lived down that road.
Which way, Drew Hill or Langton?
Langton, yeah. But it was, it was still, it was still, it was still in Alstead. It was still Alst, I was still just up the road, just, you know, I wasn't far, that far down the road. So.
So what, what? What's the, where's this stuff, information going? That's just what you did for Alstead and then, okay.
Yeah.
But it's, it's ready for you to, to present it or, or a summary of it to the, uh, to the entire, to the entire delegation. Rather than just the executive.
So those middle numbers are, can, can be, can be broadcast for all of the towns, really.
The, the, yeah, the county tax numbers can broadcast for everybody. To do it for age, individual town, as to its impact, that's where, again, I have all the information, I just have to.
Are we still at the executive committee level headed for minor increases?
Right now, um, we're working, we have our, our direction on, uh, last, this past Monday from, uh, Representative Eaton was to see where we can get to as close to zero percent as we possibly can. Working with Cheryl yesterday and the day before, uh, we're about fourteen thousand dollars off. But that doesn't include some of the, to the requests that they're going to have to decide whether they include in the budget or not.
Three.
Three, yeah.
Because they asked them to give us suggestions, and they can cut it, right?
We were asked, we were asked, yeah.
Well, I, I said, request, yeah.
We were asked to, but there's, there are some, there are requests that are on the table, that they're looking at, um, uh, they're looking at, uh, an increased position, uh, an added position in grants, an added position in IT.
Well, that's Rob advocating again to put that in his, his position.
And then what was the third one? And then, and then adding a, adding a victim, another victim witness.
And that.
Removed.
This is not that, this was brought forward by, um, by a representative, not by Chris. Chris is, Chris is aware of it. Chris had a conversation with that representative. So we're keeping those outside of the budget. They're going to have to add those. They're gonna have to make the choice to add those in, but what we have told them is that makes, uh, that they would be mid-year or our, or later August, to have the least impact on the budget. And by the time you get around to getting the April one, getting things, it, it's just makes sense that we do a half year. So those are things that they're gonna have to decide, but we are, we're slowly getting to the, the point where.
E to B. I can't remember where we started, it's a two point three or something.
So, um.
Eight, seven.
So it was like about six hundred thousand dollars, um, but just shy of six hundred thousand. The, one of the areas that I offered up, which was a significant decrease, was I feel like we can decrease our tan borrowing. Um, we got a hundred and seventy-five thousand there, but the other areas.
We have, we have interest on the nursing home that we, we've been slowly utilizing to offset the bond when we need to make the, you know, each year, and we're utilizing some of that funding too, correct?
Yeah, it basically would be using the rest of it. We were gonna use the rest of it this year.
Yeah.
But because our interest income just blew out of the water, I didn't even move it. Because otherwise, so we're gonna go a little over to next year, so that's.
Because the rates.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, um.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. I, I went from where I'm working now, I went from point five to five point three.
Yeah, that's the same as us.
And, uh, we didn't, and that was great, Matt, Matt Goma.
Yeah.
Bank was very anxious to do more at the municipal level, because we called them up, they have thirteen accounts spread all over the place. We aggregated the money. Spread all over the place. We aggregated the money and then we're gonna go to the public deposit. And they said, well, no, give us a chance. And they, they did great. Picked up an extra thirty, forty thousand in the first six months.
Yeah. So the other areas is um we're gonna be able to eliminate the increase for the sheriff because the union did not accept it. So that's forty-one thousand, but.
Right.
Um and then I have yet to talk to Catherine. I don't think she's gonna have a problem with it not to eliminate the position and not to even take it all away, but. Currently, she's without a speech therapist. She's got alternative of a contract coming in. But I think at least for this year, we can reduce the budget by half. So that's like sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um and then Chris offered up a two thousand dollar. Reduction for this cell phone device management that was in there.
There was a tool that Rob had wanted to utilize but never, never materialized and I'm talking to. Davis Seatfield, it's not necessary to utilize that, so we reduced that budget line.
We have something that we're teetering on that hasn't been presented to the executive committee and it's a contract for the geothermal for the jail. That wasn't part of the budget for twenty-two thousand five, but we're, we're not one hundred percent certain. We actually have to add the full twenty-two five because the line item it would be coming out of. Actually, had it been this year, there would have been enough pretty much to cover it. So um. You know, it's, it's one of those things that they may be able to cover it and go a little bit over budget. Um or we could add it just enough to bring that fourteen-six oh one down to zero. Um there's another thing that came up at the budget meeting that originally. At for the jail management software. That uh we had originally removed it and we're putting. Half of the cost aside in capital reserve to get it taken care of in twenty-twenty-five. Um when Rob spoke to it, he advocated that it happens this year versus next year.
Right.
And so um we've added it back in. And then we'll use capital reserves to cover. The balance because the jail has capital reserve, so that doesn't end up having any impact on the taxes. Um but otherwise, these three positions. So we can get to zero, but if we need to consider these three positions added. That will then end up increasing the budget by a hundred and twelve thousand. Oh eighty-six and whether or not we're continued to be pushed to get those to zero. Those will be really on the executive committee to make the decision if they want them there.
A thousand, that's. Inescrable increase.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, you know, we're in the ballpark where where we we feel we need to be. And we'll see what 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 they say.
Okay.
Um I know that we are, um you know, we have one more presentation, one more day next week where then they'll make some. Some decisions based on that and if they need to go another week, they'll tell us that and we're we're set up for that. But we're looking at Monday, Monday here at nine o'clock, so. Um.
Monday the twelfth. Because I told you I can't be here because I have a doctor's appointment.
Well, it's word of the last.
I know.
So it went fine.
Um, so we had a a great phone call yesterday with Andrew Keller. Andrew Keller. Is oversees uh solar gardens. Um that's the name of the business, Lumnia is is the other name of the business. And um we dealt with Andrew in the past. We had him come in and do a presentation when we were looking at putting. Um solar up at the nursing home and he was the guy that pretty much said, y- you can't do it. Uh he said, we've looked at everything, you set the land for it, but to get the power out to the grid. It's, you're going to have to run lines and that run lines are gonna cost you about a million dollars per mile. And you're looking at a seven to eight million dollar just to run the line. And he said, I'd love, you have the perfect land for everything we want to do. So yesterday we met with him and I like him because he's just an upfront, you know, he just tells it like it is. And he's like, I I wanna be honest with you. If you're looking at getting a project developed, it's probably about a three year, two to three year right now. It has nothing to do with us. It has to do everything with other sources. In that, they don't, they're saying they don't have the the staff there to to review. And um review the, review what needs to be done and they're backed up.
And you know, what if we, what if we do behind the meter, s- smaller projects?
He, I, this is what we talked about. And so he is going to work with us. And look at every, every opportunity that's out there. He has a property right now that's ready to go in Swansea. He also says what we can do. He said that, you know, looking at, looking at, you know, doing something up at the uh DOC. And their facility up there would make sense, uh especially with the, with the, with the group space that they have. Um, he said, so he said, let's start this conversation. The thing that we need to do is we just need to, and Davis is working on this, send him what our usage model is. So that he has that, so he can start looking at different ways that we can go about putting something together. I mean, I don't need to own this, if I don't, I don't need to own it, but if we can own it, if it's on our building, that makes all the sense in the world.
I think that's certainly.
Yeah, yeah. And then I, but I said, I haven't, I said, I've now had three meetings with one of the biggest vendors. And every time when they come in with numbers, the numbers don't add up and it doesn't make sense to us. And so he's like, I get it. And and he was, he said, let's start this relationship and let's just start developing, working together. If you wanna be as we move forward, if you wanna be part of those conversations. Yeah, then let's, let's, let's get it because he really, I think he's really refreshing. Um.
Super honest.
Yeah, and really upfront. And and he's got, I mean, he built the the Milton, New Hampshire. Five megawatt deal that they have out there. And he, and he said, he said, I was talking to you guys when I was building that, if you remember, and he said, I said, yeah, I do. I I, because you were showing it. And as he's sitting there, that's the pitch in the background is 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 Milton. But he has, he's done multiple projects from Puerto Rico to New Hampshire to, I mean, everywhere. And, you know, there, the, he just, he said, I'll deliver for you and we'll, we'll, we'll get it to where it needs to be. But let's, I need to know exactly what you're looking for. And I, I felt like I peppered him with a lot of good questions. But, you know, if you wanna join us and add some more conversation. Because I really just wanna nail this down. This is the one thing that's hanging out that that I haven't been. And I want to, but I haven't felt comfortable with anything that's been presented to me at this point. And this was the first conversation where I walked away with that, all right, I think we're on the right course. So that's exciting. So I will include you in, in let's, let's make note and when we're gonna have another meeting that, that will include you into the conversation.
Um, just one thing about purchasing versus leasing. Is that when you lease, you have built-in escalators, rate charges. And City of Keene for their array on Marlborough Street.
Yeah.
It, you know, it started, they started to plot at at nine point. Four percent, nine point four cents.
Yeah.
And it increased. The escalator was one percent per year.
Yeah.
That was, so now, they won't, they haven't given me the information yet. I'll have to file a right to know.
Yeah.
What rate are they paying for solar power on their own building right now? I'll bet you it's fifteen percent.
Yeah.
It doesn't follow the market.
Right.
So you have to be careful there.
Well, and and here's the other thing that is really interesting. He's working in community power right now. Because he has power that uh power that they can buy. And he said, wouldn't it be great? I mean, if we had some local set off options for people to buy into. I, you know, whether it's basic or whether you start going up and that, that instead of going out of state or or buying it over here, here, here. That you can buy it right in Chester County.
Yes.
So those are things that he, and so he's already working with community power on that, that's, he's working with Brian. On that, on those, on those, those things. So I think you're gonna like him and what he has to say. And uh so we're gonna keep moving forward with with the discussion pertaining to that. So because he does have some land in Swansea that that um down there.
But that would have to be known, maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's all, it's, let's just have that conversation, see where it goes. We're in the very.
Hmm, what's his last name?
Keller, K E L L A R.
A R.
Keller. Um, just a reminder that the uh work starts next week on Tuesday for the elevator. And that's a four-week process. Um. I I don't, Cheryl, did you, yeah, you did see, you you answered it and that's what uh they unclaimed property in Carroll County.
Yeah.
Oh, you know, they got the unclaimed.
Yeah, you can go online.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh Carroll County uh had a, had a, had a check sent to them for what, over eight hundred thousand dollars?
They identified that there was over eight hundred thousand dollars of unclaimed property that was specifically. Due to Carroll County. So.
County government?
Yeah, so Kate Horkin said, you know, was passing it along as a FYI, you may all wanna check on this. Which, so I I did for the heck of it. And there was probably about, I don't know, twelve different things out there, a little piddly things like for registry of deeds.
Right.
Um, um, just like, just, I mean, I it totaled like a thousand dollars, but that would be pretty embarrassing to miss. Eight hundred thousand dollars of money that came our way that we never cashed the check.
Oh my god.
I I don't know what.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm confused.
Somebody owed, some vendor owed Carroll County eight hundred thousand dollars. That somehow, I don't know if it was one or multiple, but that somehow. Everybody's required to submit um unclaimed property to the state. We do it every five years.
Right.
Um, for vendors every year for employees. And so um. Somebody out there that owed money to Carroll County that.
So they've been holding it aside, unable to deliver it to Carroll County and they ultimately eschewed it to the state.
Yes, yeah.
Because they said, I don't know what to do, they don't want the money.
Well, you're required to. You're required, it's a required mandate.
Yeah.
Eight hundred. So, so how, how, how would that person not understand how to reach out to Carroll County?
I don't know.
I mean.
I, I.
There's, there's at least a dozen elected and appointed officials that you, you could reach out to.
Yeah.
It's not like there.
Remember when my kids were babies, I I found uncashed paycheck. Now, King just went and he couldn't believe it. So interesting, I thought it was a stove.
Yeah.
Anyway, moving on.
Um. Next week I have a meeting set up with uh Antrol, um Fourteenth, who is uh nursing. Up at the uh head of nursing and other areas uh for the hospital.
And.
Yeah, and then also I'm meeting the city manager next week. I'm just catching up and seeing where things are at. And then meeting to, today, no, tomorrow, tomorrow at ten thirty. Tomorrow with Southwest Regional Planning to discuss some, some things that we need to be discussing there as a mitigation.
Right.
And some other issues. That's where we're at this week. Does anybody know about the New Hampshire campaign for legal aid?
For what?
New Hampshire Campaign for Legal Aid. Sarah Palomero, who used to be a reporter for the Sentinel, I remember exactly.
Yes, she did.
Um, is leading this up. She's invited me to something. It's at Juliana Bergerock's house. Um and it's called New Hampshire Campaign for Legal Aid, so I just didn't know anybody about it. So, um, yeah.
Fox in the heavens.
Yeah.
For legal aid?
Yes.
I don't know what that means. In, in, in.
I, I, I.
In the house of a staunch Republican, I'm not sure what that means.
I, 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 I.
Jufisms like that.
I know, I know, that's, that's why I say, that means.
So, and then last but not least, there's, um, I have received, I don't, um. I don't have a quick answer for this, the the only answer I can really, and I talked to Cheryl about this, is Radical Liberal, we've sponsored the last two years. Um has come forward uh with, with a request for us uh to see if we are, there's a way that we can sponsor again this year. Um, if, you know, in the past we've utilized, I believe, both your ARPA monies, I don't believe, I mean, I could, we could. We could take a look at, at, you know, at seeing if there was some way that we could utilize some level of of fund that comes in in August or in June. But um at this point, I'll let you read it and go through it and next week we'll wanna talk about it and revisit it. That's fine. You still, I don't like to give you something on a request and not give you some.
They don't want fifth time grant.
Yeah.
Were they, what they previously doing, giving their three-day conferences every other year?
No, they've been doing it every year, even during COVID, but they, it was during COVID, they went to uh a Zoom. Model and then as COVID starts softening down, they kept the both models and they kept both of that, but it's really turned back to. Um, people turning up for the days and and it's been a good balance. It's been very well reviewed, it's been good things, uh it looks like have come out of it, um.
To what extent did uh have, have we, have we sponsored that in prior years?
We, the last two years, we've done um. Aqua funding, there are twenty thousand and twenty thousand.
Yeah, they got it, they knocked off the funding the first year and they came forward this uh again, second year and.
Yeah, this is, you know, the Sentinel, the Sentinel actually goes in, in hand, in hand with Hannah Grimes and. And that, that is Radical Rules through Hannah Grimes, but Sentinel's the other partner in this. And Terry Williams, if you remember, Terry Williams and Juliana Dotson came and presented to you about the findings. And she's more than willing to come and answer any questions that you may have. And again, I wanted to give you this today, we can talk about it next week if you have more questions about it.
So.
How, how to get those monies if I was gonna go down that road, because there is no ARPA fund.
Yeah, there's uh basically after the two next year's subsidy commitment for um the towns and then twenty-twenty-five commitment for the towns. There is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand of ARPA funds that we're likely gonna, I. We're gonna need just to even offset the deficit that we've got going for twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
But that deficit's getting a bit smaller, only because everything we're continuing to get from coastal. And everything we've been getting from E-Max so far is really twenty-twenty-three revenue, so I can continue to keep pushing that back.
So Radical Rule is only hosted in Keene.
It's what?
Only hosted in Keene.
So in the past, in the past, that's practice, which they turn the City of Keene into a, into a uh conference room. Uh conference area. And so they use different, they use this.
So it's not, so it's not a statewide effort?
Well, yeah, they. Coming in from all over the state.
They have very much.
Three hundred attendees.
Yeah, well, only, yeah, a hundred and eighty-seven of Keene. Why, why, why is that? I mean, is it, it, this, isn't, because I, I, I can remember, it's really a national thing, right?
Is it?
I'm not sure.
Well, they have the, the breakdown of, of, of. The numbers, don't they, yeah?
Well, by county. Yo, the New Hampshire, it says New Hampshire impact, you know, but.
Is it, is it just it? I mean, does anybody else do it?
This was founded by, this is the, this is, yeah, this is.
Oh, so it is.
This is a Marion Christensen.
Okay.
Thing that she started through Hannah Grimes and.
Is there any, any way we can get a better understanding of the entire radically rural budget? You know, there are other funders.
Yeah, I can have.
Compared our, to all the other money there for Steve.
Yeah. I can.
You know, just like any other outside agency, they wanna, where they're funding.
Yeah.
Because.
Should they be, at least in future years, go through an outside agency? I mean, should they see some application?
I don't see this continuing.
I don't either.
I don't see the revenue continuing that we've used and I don't think it's appropriate to do a kind of a backdoor additional outside agency. But if they wanted to be an outside agency. That, that, and that the executive committee decide, and I don't think that would go well. Uh have these established any?
I think, I think the worst, the, the best case scenario for them is that if there is a way to do it this year, that's by, that you put them on notice that this would be the last year.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know.
That's, if that's something you can do.
We, we spend so much time crafting safety nets in a whole variety of areas, which I think are entirely programmed.
Yeah.
This one is a little more. This one is a little more of a stretch and the only thing that makes it doable is other people's money. And when other people's money goes away, I don't see how it's, how we can continue it.
Have they been able to establish any tangible, I would say, results, but.
Like expansion of the economic base by getting into business.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's new, so I didn't.
Yeah, I think that, like I said, I wanted to present their initial proposal. In the past, I've had them come in and talk to that and answer those questions. And I'll I'll set that up, but I just wanted to have you be aware that this is something that they're proposing. Go for that.
I saw you suggesting that if it's considered after further information, that it would be funded by pro share funds and all this.
I don't know. I don't know what we would have to do. We would have to, we, I don't have that, when you and I talked, we didn't have that quick answer. We'd have to come up with something and see if you guys would even.
I don't see how this would qualify for a brochure. I can't imagine.
So I mean, the only other option is that we dip into the little bit of ARPA funds that we have left.
I I think, I think our missions otherwise are too important. The whole EMS thing, and I just think we we need to be careful about what resources are left to continue to launch that. It's just me.
I agree.
So somebody's going to come and talk to us.
If that's what you want.
Yes.
I I think I I'd need that before I can go.
Okay, all right. I will set that up, but I'll meet you today, not the next week, but you know, shortly there.
And the whole.
Yeah.
Chris? Um, if you're at a break in the action, I had one quick follow up from executive committee budget review earlier this week.
Yep.
Um, Terry, it might have been you, but I forgot who originated the question. We were talking about the parking lot project and the possibility of adding an exit point from the lot to the driveway. Was that you or someone else?
Yes. Yes, it was.
Okay, it and it occurred to me, one of these things you, in the middle of the night, I don't know why. There is a reason that we didn't do that or wouldn't want to, and it is that when we have vehicles coming down the driveway and occasionally we've had suspicious activity or a need to capture the license plate on our video camera. The ability of the camera to pick up the plate information is much, much better when the vehicle approaches the the building and we would potentially lose that. So there's a a rare but occasional safety related purpose to to not putting that cut out in that end of the driveway.
Well, a bigger reason for me, I don't know where we put, well, first of all, I don't know where we put it.
Just take one of those rocks out of it.
It's like we got, one of the things is we've got wetland detention based mitigations on both sides of the driveway.
On both.
Yes, right at the end of the driveway and then on the other side of the road, on the other side of the driveway facing the.
Yeah, it goes on the left of the road.
Yeah, so I, you can't, that's wetlands, that's one. So you have to get a whole alteration of drains and a wetland permit that was part of the mitigation.
Oh, really?
That we had to do to on both sides of the entryway. As well as down the block.
Well, I mean, Doug has come up with, you know, a tangible reason, you know, as well. It's not a big deal. I'm just sort of, no. Not enough to do.
Well, I was just a little. Well, and you're and you're and yours isn't where you're 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 hitting, Doug is okay, yours is, yeah, it's mitigating, it doesn't matter.
Three hundred, three hundred.
So there's two, two reasons, I guess, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
All righty, nevermind.
That was, that was all. I just wanted to close the loop in case down the road we we didn't do it and someone, you might have been offended that I forgot about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be preserved preserved in infamy.
Yes.
Moving on, is there any old business? Any new business?
I have a another situation I want to ask about regarding a bill for EMS. Again, it's.
In invoice?
Yeah, so it's only because I I'm now actually starting to get questions or feedback. So I'm hoping this will all work out, but I received a an invoice from Coastal from the patient, along with an EOB from their insurance company. She's authorizing us, not that it was an option with Coastal, but she's authorizing us to charge her HSA card for the dollar amount that her insurance company paid.
That's interesting.
Health savings again.
Yeah, so I have to, our only means of being able to do a credit card charge is through the sheriff's department. And so I, something tells me by using it, running an HSA through the sheriff's department is probably going to send a red flag off to the HSA company. So I need to have a conversation with this person. This is kind of a confusing story. She is only authorizing the amount that the insurance paid because I've since learned that she got the check, but what she's not, what she's not considering is that in addition to what the insurance paid.
It's balance.
There is a co-insurance that would be her responsibility too. So that's another conversation I need to have with her. However, when I reached out to Coastal, she said, so when you talk, when when you consider this, are you considering writing off the balance between the gross charges and the net that is the co-insurance and the payment from the insurance company? Because otherwise this would have been one that they would have expected the full difference between the two. And so if it was a different type of insurance like Medicare or Medicaid, we would have accepted the net. So my question is, is are you okay that we just get the co-insurance and what the insurance company paid without me pushing to get the amount? So the the gross bill is twenty one hundred dollars. And then ultimately, if I can get this person to pay the allowed amount, which would be the insurance and the co-insurance, it would be four hundred and seventy dollars and five cents, which is, let me just see.
Well.
So in a couple of things.
She got the check, she kept the money. And rather than send that check on to us, she wants us just to take it out of her HSA?
Well, she's probably doing it because, well, now that you think about it, she's actually asking us to use her HSA for something that she got, that's a, I never even thought that level. The co-insurance would be appropriate for.
Yeah.
So that's another conversation.
Yeah, she owes us the money she got from the insurance company, period. She owes us for the co-pay. I don't care how she does it.
Yeah.
She can.
But now my question is, is are we going to push for the full twenty one hundred? Which is what Coastal would have continued pushing for.
I I would think so.
Okay.
How much, how much this is?
She owes, well, the gross charge is twenty one hundred dollars. Her insurance allowed out of that twenty one hundred dollars, four hundred and seventy dollars and five cents. That's all.
And they paid her.
They paid her three seventy six oh four because out of that four seventy oh five that they are saying is what they would allow.
Was it?
There was a co-insurance that would have been her responsibility of ninety four oh one. I never even thought about the fact that she's actually wanting to charge her HSA for money that the insurance company paid directly to her. Ninety four oh one would be appropriate. But my further question is, is are we pushing for the full twenty one hundred? And Jack is saying.
That'd be my opinion. I mean. Where was the ambulance tried to?
Oh, I I don't have that level of detail. That's that's the thing is, I.
They didn't send the money to the patient.
Because some insurance companies do and that.
There's a bill, there's actually a bill being heard right now as we speak.
Oh, really?
In reference to making that, taking that clause out.
Because they're trying to punish any ambulance company that gets in network with them. And they deliberately, they deliberately try to screw the agencies that aren't in network by only sending money. I guess you'll have to get it from them. You're not with us.
Percentage that we can't recover from, once they give it to them, expend it.
Oh, that's the problem. That money's already gone. This this, she probably got that money a couple of months ago at this point.
I, no, no, I don't think so. I think it's only been within the, and I I had to reach out to Lisa, I said, because I'm looking at the explanation of benefits and I'm like, where do you know that this person got the payment? And it must be something that they got directly from from the insurance company that said, we paid this, but the check has gone to the the patient. I I mean, on on a little bit of a flip side of this, in working with Emax, but this is what's good about Emax is our gross charges are high. They are high and they're obviously going to work with whatever we want, but this is where they say the trickle down effect is, is that we're, we're only going to get what like especially with Medicaid and Medicare, we accept their payments, but this is where your consumer out there is getting put on the hook for higher gross charges when we require that somebody without insurance or without in-network insurance is still responsible. And that's where, you know, they just, they'll give us more feedback as to what is ultimately the test of all this because when you've got people that just don't pay or can't pay and then it's us just writing off the balance. Then you sometimes you don't scare somebody away to pay something that is a little more reasonable versus something that is like, wow, I can't even do this at all. But the these are the conversations Coastal has never had with us. But Emax, that's just their first out of the gate evaluation of our our gross charges.
I have no problem revisiting our gross charges because you virtually never get them anyway. But we've already talked about being open to negotiated payments, negotiated payments.
But. But we don't get those requests from Coastal and so, but.
Yeah, I know.
Um, but I guess that's kind of what we're being asked at the moment is, are you willing to negotiate in this particular case to at least take what they've been paid plus the co-insurance and negotiate not collecting on the balance between the difference.
This this comes back to really the conspiracy between the New Hampshire Insurance Department and insurance, the commercial insurance carriers to drive down reimbursement rates with the protection provided by the insurance department. So that is it anthem, make bear in the room, their reimbursement rates are lower than Medicaid. And they're allowed, yeah, they've been allowed to simply continue to lower their reimbursement, their reimbursement rates are lower now than they were ten years ago. And and so they played this hardball because they're going to force everybody to be in network, force a lower reimbursement rate and try to punish you by sending the money to the patient and making you chase after it to collect it. I mean, it is absolute power play by commercial insurance with the, with the really consent and encouragement by the insurance department.
We would go, we would have an hour to a two hour meeting and Jack and I would be up at the insurance commission up in Concord, meeting with the commissioner and others. And the lobbyists for Anthem and others would be in the room and pushing back against us. And at the end of the meeting, they'd finish the meeting, they'd thank everybody, we'd all start getting up. They would walk out with the lobbyists down the hallway. Whatever, they maybe have another meeting after this meeting, who knows? So my wife was up meeting with the commissioner on an insurance issue with schools. I said, so with the with the lobbyists there for 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 the insurance, but she's, oh, yeah. And they, these women, they they really are like very strong in their their personality around, unless their job, I said, that's what they they need to, they need to, she said, they push their agenda, even though it doesn't, to me, it didn't make sense what they were saying. I said, did you notice anything? When the meeting ended, did those same individuals get up and walk out with those, the leadership of the insurance commissioner on a, oh, my God, you're right. How do you know that? I said, because it's the same thing that happened to us. When we met with them, they say, we would have this meeting and we would be pushing back, maybe pushing back, we'd be, we'd try to, that by common ground, they, you know. And then they get up and leave and walk and walk away. And I'm like, I'm thinking, this is the baddest gift right here. And my little thinking, that is, that is such a bad look to leave the room and and walk down the hall towards your office with those individuals.
The same thing happened with Elizabeth when we were having hearings on the the wifi. You know, the four, four G, five G thing.
Yeah.
Same thing happened. The lobbyists were actually called back into a hearing to testify. And then Elizabeth left with them.
That, you know, the it, what it reveals is the brazenness and the legacy of the close relationship with commercial coverage, manipulating the insurance department. They even, they 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 did this years ago when I worked for Governor Hassan. They, the insurance company refused. But they had to be badgered by the governor's office to uh, look at parity coverage for mental health and substance abuse, which traditionally in commercial insurance, they refuse to pay, but they pay a little bit and they don't pay the same as with other health problems. And the insurance company delayed as long as possible even looking at. And it's just disgraceful. It's literally disgraceful. And I've not been shy about wearing my socks.
No, he hasn't. He hasn't at all. But the stockholders, I get you're going to, you're going to do each other's stockholder.
I've.
Or a quote, but I don't care. I don't care.
They had a net profit of two billion dollars.
Correct.
I've got all of those numbers and and but the insurance commissioner, uh, or the assistant insurance commissioner, Alex, he says, oh, well, if they start reimbursing more, they'll have to charge the poor, poor clients more in premiums, which of course is bullshit because they they are making hand over fist money for their stockholders. And would it increase the amount of money that commercial insurers have to pay out? Yes, it would. But they are absolutely profiting off of the back of every EMS agency, public and private, and every every customer of theirs that has an insurance policy that gets inadequate coverage.
Yeah.
It's absolute hell, right?
It it is, and it's the reason that privates are are dying left and right in the state of New Hampshire and it's putting more pressure on municipalities to cover those services, which puts a harder burden on the taxpayer because now they've got to add an ambulance or whatever. Maybe it's this big circle that nobody wants to really admit to.
Yeah, the commercial insurers would love to force through policy and collusion with the insurance department, which would force municipalities to pay for pre-hospital care. Because they equate pre-hospital medical care with no different than a a fire that's somebody's house without a fire. And they've said in these meetings, hey, we don't pay for the fire department to show up. Why would we pay for an ambulance? Because they're not the same. What you're getting in an ambulance is healthcare and it's comparable in your policy. So it, I don't know, other than a class action suit, I don't know how to address it.
Yeah.
Because you cannot get the cooperation of the insurance department and they don't have the courage to actually represent the citizens whose rates of reimbursement are pathetic. And actually introducing legislation to prevent us challenging what they pay and forcing the reimbursements to be, as a matter of law, unappealable. And pulling it away from the customer, the the patient themselves. So it's a huge conspiracy. I mean. Very interesting.
And 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 it's it's just crushing and nobody seems to care. And 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 it's it's just crushing, and nobody seems to care that it's just crushing. Because it's politics one of, you know, even on the on the legislative side, it's politics one oh one. They give us money, you know, it's sort of like Eversource, when I had the conversation with Andrew Keller yesterday, I said, so wait a second, so it's taking them. You know, if they're backlog, and then when you do find they get in, it's six months to a year to get it approved, he said, yeah. I said, so why don't you, why don't we see if we can get legislation in place that if by after six months, they can't, if they can't see it. Within six months and have it done in six months, then a third party vendor comes in and and takes and 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 takes it over and will approve it separate. Uh we're we're already in the process of doing it, but we're getting real strong pushback, you know, and it's like. It it's like, it's Eversource, and Eversource is no different than Anthem in my world of thinking in that. They've got a power play. They've got no desire to push this stuff along faster. What what is it, how does it benefit them? How does this benefit? The revenues, and talk about two billion dollars, you know, and and the the stockholders are seeing. They're 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 experiencing the same thing. That's why they had to do the payback that you talked about the other, because they overcharge, correct? And it's just, it's just, I, it it's mad to me that nobody will stand up and do right. It's mad to me, now you got me going, and it's mad to me about the Republican Party's talking about border, border, border. They have this bipartisan thing that comes together and says, we're gonna do this. And now they're saying, we're not doing it. Yeah, but I just
But but keep in mind.
Do what's right.
Immigration has been a hot button for election practices for forty plus years, maybe a hundred years. There's no reason, there's no motivation for politicians to fix it, because if you take immigration out of the political debate. What's left? And nobody wants to come back to it, we have, we have to keep this moving.
Yeah, I have to, yeah, we have to, we have to say this, but it's it is, it is bad when you know. That that lives depend on the services that we're trying to put put out there, whether it's the city of King, whether it's. Jeffrey, whether it's Cheshire EMS, whoever it is, and that they are being subject. To this kind of stuff that in Concord, and no one's willing to stop and say, stop. And like they did fifteen years ago when they said stop, and they bumped up the overall uh, you know, rate of pay uh by seventy five percent.
I I'll tell you from my research um against insurance companies, the only time that they make. Adjustments to their reimbursement rates is when they're settled.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and let's be realistic, it's the only reason we have seatbelts in our
Yeah, yeah.
On laws, it's the only reason we have a lot of these things.
That's why they automatically uh in policy refuse the first claim.
Right, yeah.
Because they know a certain percentage won't pursue.
Yeah. So um. I just have to make sure to cover this. A calendar is not fine, is fine, general discussion for commissioners, I think we just added. There is no non-public, because we already had that around personnel matter with the accounting attorney and sheriff, send a motion to adjourn.
Go to adjourn.
Second, Commissioner Wosman.
Hi.
Commissioner Clark, thank you.